Okay, we're going to call this meeting to order. Welcome, everybody, and good evening. The first order of business is our invocation, and we have Councilmember Metzner. And then the pledge to the flag to follow.
We meet to serve our community, to use our resources wisely and well, to represent all members of our community fairly, to make decisions that promote the common good. We recognize our responsibility to the past and the future, and the rights and needs of both individuals and community. As trusted servants, we seek blessings on our deliberations and on our efforts here today. May we act wisely and well. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Announcements for this evening. We're going to follow the rules of procedure as adopted on December 18th, 2012. Use of cell phones during meetings is restricted. All correspondence for distribution to elected officials should be provided to the city clerk and should include a copy for the city clerk for inclusion in the official record. Our meeting schedule for April, we're going to have a work session next Tuesday at 4:00 PM, again on the 9th and 16th at 4:00 PM. Our regular session will be at 7:00 PM. And Tuesday, April 30th, we're keeping open, so we may or may not have a meeting. It may depend on how we are doing with the budget. First thing for this evening is our appointments. We have three appointments to the Community Development Block Grant Public Service Review Committee. And are we doing oaths for that? No, we're just... Okay. And we also have, and those folks being appointed to the public, I'm sorry, the Community Development Block Grant Public Service Review Committee are Howard Bowers, Cynthia Brown, and Colin Coleman. The terms will be expiring on March 26, 2014. We've also appointed Colin Coleman to the Planning Commission with a term to expire on May 30, 2014, and he will be taking the place that I had on the Planning Commission. And if you don't mind, I might just introduce him, because I know he's here. Colin, come on up. This is Colin Coleman, everybody. He is a downtown resident. He lives on Antietam Street, correct? And has a wife and small child, and is obviously of the younger generation. I think he's about a year younger than I am. I think he is the right person for the Planning Commission, because he brings youthful energy and a vision of what he wants, I think what we all share for the vision in downtown, which is to bring more people like himself, young families, to live in downtown who want new and exciting things to happen here. He's a project manager for an engineering firm, so he's got good ideas and a good work ethic. And he's also involved in the Neighborhoods First. So just wanted to make that introduction to everybody, to the council members who didn't get to meet him at Neighborhoods First, and thank you for being here. Yes?
Just make a comment as well.
Please.
I'd like to commend this gentleman as well. When I was knocking on doors, I knocked on his door, and we had, we had good conversation. And one night I was in Bulls and Bears, and there he was with his family eating, and we had another good conversation. And I think he is intensely interested in seeing the city succeed, and I believe he'll do a great job of helping that success. So, welcome.
And a Washington County native, too, as well, right?
Correct.
All right. Well, thanks for being here, Colin. And also, the appointment for the City Ethics Commission will be former council member and former mayor and former city administrator and former city engineer and other positions, Mr. Bill Brickner, will be appointed to serve on the city's ethics commission. So, at this point, I would entertain a motion to approve these appointments.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for the appointment of the following members to the Community Development Block Grant Public Service Review Committee, all for terms to expire on March 26, 2014. Howard Bauer, Cynthia Brown, and Colin Coleman.
Second?
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Brubaker. Any discussion? All in favor of those appointments to the Community Development Block Grant Public Service Review Committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Appointments are made.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for the appointment of Colin Coleman to the Planning Commission for a term to expire on May 30, 2014.
Second?
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Brubaker. Any discussion? All those in favor of the appointment, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next.
Mr. Mayor, I would hereby move for the appointment of William M. Brickner to the City Ethics Commission for a term to expire September 1, 2016.
Second?
And a motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to comment. I want to thank Bill Brickner for accepting this. He has been in the city as long as anyone can remember, and he and his wife continue to be very active in, in the city for the betterment of the city, and I want to thank him for doing this.
Well, since we've opened for comments, I want to greet Mr. Coleman, since I am the ex officio member on the Planning Commission and look forward to meeting. Are you going to make our meeting tomorrow night at 7:00? Very good. I will see you there. Thank you. Did you get a packet? Good. Make sure you're doing your homework.
I don't doubt that he will. Any other discussion? Motion is on the floor. All those in favor of the appointment, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Thank you all. At this time, we are going to move into citizen comments. The first on the list tonight is Mary W. Haynes. If you wouldn't mind, please coming up to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and glad to hear it.
I'm Mary W. Haynes, 27 Laurel Street, Hagerstown's North End, 21742. And I'm here this evening to discuss something that I think is very serious on a street level, literally, how to pick up after your dog, if that's all right.
Please.
Okay. Well, I'm going to move up to this table. I've done the best that I can to reproduce what is likely to be found out on the street, and I am very serious about what we're doing here this evening, because you all have passed an ordinance which says that it's illegal to leave the business of your dog behind on the street. I have made the assumption that since you are walking your dog, you really care about your dog. That means that you really want to do the best thing for your dog, which is pick up after him, because there are two matters. One is the legal issue and the community issue of people running into the problems of stepping in what you've left behind. And then, if you think about it, what's come out of your dog, has just been in your dog, is telling you a great deal about his health. If you find it so squishy that you don't really want to pick it up, then there's probably a problem with it. You should see the vet about it. And I could go on about parasites that you could find and other assorted nonsense, but if you really do care about your dog and you seriously want to do the best thing for him, pay attention to what you're picking up. Don't definitely leave it behind. Now, I have here three different kinds of bags. This the city provides, but the only place that I know of that you can get it that's outside of the downtown is out at what they call Ottinger Park. It's the strip park between Forest Drive and Oak Hill. There are two boxes that have these. You just go up to the box and pull it out, and there it is. It really works rather well. It has a little sort of couple arrangement at the bottom. Voila, picked up. Next, and really my personal preference, the Washington Post comes in these things. By the way, check for the... Well, I don't know about the local paper, but the Washington Post does, and it's fairly sturdy. But check to make sure of the integrity of the thing. You really do want it to be intact. The reason I like the longer, bigger bag is because you can grab one, but you still have material left that you can. Now, I'm coming into contact with the paper. When I'm out, trust me, I don't come into contact with the dog poop. It is possible to do that. And you picked up a number of instances. In my case, I've got four dogs, so I have to have something that's going to give me multiple instances of picking up after my dog. Then last but not least, one that I really find kind of problematic, because more often than not, you don't really suspect it, but it's lost its integrity. But you can successfully pick up a number of instances of your dog relieving himself on the streets. Does anybody have any questions? I've tried to do this, leaving as little to the imagination as possible, but at the same time, not being obnoxious. And I, at this point, anybody who's seen this little production this evening has absolutely no excuse for not doing exactly what I showed you. No questions, right? Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. It is a very important issue, and please...
I'd like to commend Mary on her presentation. Mary's my neighbor, and so I see her walking her dogs frequently.
I have four of them.
And she is incredibly responsible. She takes care of the matters that she needs to take care of, and that's good for our whole community. So, thank you for that, Mary. Thank you for your demonstration.
You're quite welcome. I care about the dogs, and I care about the town.
You do.
Thank you, everybody.
And as unpleasant as it may be for, as a topic, it really is important that people clean up after their pets, truly.
Well, part of the reason I'm here is because one of the ladies who was standing beside me out at Cumberland Valley checking out, had discovered that despite the fact she was giving her animal heart guard or interceptor or whatever it was, the animal had parasites. Now, that isn't supposed to happen, and that particular pesticide will step in and pay for the treatment. But if she leaves that behind, then my dog coming along sniffing it could very easily come down with the same parasite, and the next time my interceptor, heart guard, whatever, may decide they won't pay for it, because it was too many weeks between X and Y when I showed up. And it seriously is one of those things that dogs get the bad rap, but it's the human being who was irresponsible that should have stepped forward and just looked after his animal. If you care about it, you do it.
Indeed. Well, thank you, Mary.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Sure. The next person up for comment is Betty Wilson. Hi, Betty.
I was not expecting to be here tonight, but understand this is public comment time, and I wanted to be sure that I had an opportunity to talk to you about the proposed dog park. I am not a dog owner currently. I am a cat person. I'm not a dog person, however, I have no real beef with having a dog park. However, I have a beef with having a dog park at Reed Park. The proposal is going to say it's at Fairgrounds Park. Fairgrounds Park is predated by an area behind the 300 block of North Cannon Avenue called Reed Park, which has been in existence since at least 1942. It was sold to the city for $10. I would like to, at some point, go back and look at city council minutes and see if there's anything in the minutes about what was expected to happen in that area when, when it was sold for that amount of money, but haven't had a chance to do that yet. There are 12 residences that abut Reed Park on North Cannon Avenue. We look like a downtown street. We are a downtown street. We look like a downtown neighborhood. Our house sits directly on the sidewalk. We have a relatively small backyard. There's an alley behind the house, and then the park. Over the 30-plus years that I've lived there, that arrangement has afforded me an open space, a wide open view of the mountains. I don't feel like I'm hemmed in, in, in a tight downtown neighborhood, because I have the expanse of Reed Park. There are 12 houses, 12 residences, on North Cannon that abut the park. I think it's important for you to realize that there are two of the 12 that are, I believe, not currently occupied. The other 10 are either owner-occupied or owned by somebody that lives within that 12 unit, within those 12 units. Personally, my husband and I own two, two of the 12. Our daughter lives, and her husband live in the second unit. There are three, three of us that have two family units within that 12, if you understand what I'm saying. Parents and then their adult children within that 12. There are also three, I believe, of us that own multiple properties within. So, they're not all owner-occupied, but they're all owned by a person, by the folks that live there. I think that is relatively unique for downtown Hagerstown. I'm not saying that the park is the cause of that necessarily, but I think it would be a stretch to say the park has nothing to do with it. The dog park, to my way of thinking, is a very restricted special interest use for an expansive area that has multiple public uses at this point. There is a basketball court that gets used relatively frequently that is scheduled to just be eliminated. I can see it from my kitchen window, so I've been trying to keep track of how often it's used. And yesterday, when I looked, of course, there was nobody there. The day before, it was really cold out. This morning, this, this evening, when I looked, there was nobody there, but as I left the house, there were four folks down there playing. And I checked over at the ice rink. There were also folks playing over there. So, it's, while they're within view of each other, they're somewhat different populations that use those, too. The ice rink courts are being used more and more by organized groups, leagues, various kinds. So, that basketball court has a long history of being used by the kids from the neighborhood. The open space has a history of being used for pickup bas, for pickup football games on weekends. Now, that's not been happening so much lately, but it is one of the few large, open spaces available to folks for personal activity, you know, unorganized activities, if that's the way to put it. It also is used when there are city festivals that happen in Fairgrounds Park at the South End. It's used for parking. It's used for staging. It's used, got multiple uses. So, it seems to me that there ought to be a way to find a place for a dog park in Hagerstown that does not take a space that is an integral part of a neighborhood, that has houses that abut it, homeowners that have dogs who are going to object to having other dogs in their neighborhood, that does not already have multiple uses that would be restricted by a dog park. So, I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Betty. And we also have Peter Perini.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Zimmerman. My name is Peter Perini. My office address is 2140 Scholar Drive in Hagerstown, and I am president of Perini Landmark Development Corporation. I think you all are aware that my company is currently pursuing the opportunity, or presenting a proposal to the Board of Education for a possible new office building for their administrative offices. And it is my preference, although it is their decision, that, that that office building be in downtown Hagerstown. As I'm sure you are aware, there was a workshop meeting of the Board of Education this afternoon, and that workshop was to present, for the superintendent to present his findings, along with his, his staff and their, and their team, to present the findings of the due diligence study of the former Allegheny Energy Office Building to the board, so that they can then make an intelligent decision on either pursuing their contract of sale, abandoning the contract of sale, or their third option is to continue their contract of sale with a, an additional option that's built into that. Quite frankly, there were a lot of positive points made today about that property. It definitely is a viable opportunity for them. Personally, I think some of their estimates are a little low, but that's for the, their experts to, to determine and for their, you know, their staff and then the, ultimately the board to decide upon. But I also feel that there currently is still a open window for them to consider a new office building in downtown Hagerstown. It is certainly not my place to speak for the Board of Education, to the city council, nor is it my place to speak to the Board, to speak for the city council to the Board of Education. But if I could, just for a moment, give you my personal observation. There needs to be a better level of communication between this council and that board. I'm not pointing fingers or placing blame. I'm just stating a fact. A few weeks ago, in one of your workshops, there was a recommendation, pardon me for not remembering who said it, to possibly restart some two and two conversations with the, with the county commissioners, and I would encourage you to do the same with the Board of Education. In the meantime, that window of opportunity is about seven days long, because the Board has, the Board of Education has decided to make a, they'll make their decision on April 2nd, which is one week from today, in their, in their afternoon business meeting. I will say that my company and our partner, our development partner, will be making a presentation to them that morning in executive session as to our business proposal. So, with those things on the table, I have a recommendation. I recommend that this city council and the mayor come together and formally, in whatever manner you'd like to do, present all of the suggestions that you've made verbally, or in video form, or in any other form, to the Board of Education, whether it be a letter that you all sign, or a majority of you sign, or a resolution, or what have you. Time is short, and the time to act is right now. The second thing that I'd like to comment on in regard to the same project is that the city has kind of a unique opportunity, not available to the private sector, to obtain properties and make them available for the better good. There are a number of ways you can do that, but I think what I've seen the city council do over the years is, you know, basic purchase of property, which I think is a very good idea, as long as there's a plan. So, currently, there are, before the city council, you're working through your process of an ordinance, for example, to buy two properties on West Washington Street, which, again, I think is commendable, because there are opportunities to do redevelopment work on West Washington Street. As a matter of fact, those two properties make up half of one of the four sites that were recommended by the group that this, that this, or that the city had asked to, to do a report, I believe, the FG site. So, I, I commend you for taking those steps, but I also want to encourage you not to encumber any properties that you have that would take them out of the running, for, so to speak, for an opportunity of redevelopment. I certainly encourage any and all business to consider Hagerstown, to consider downtown, to consider the core of downtown. But at the same time, when you have an opportunity like the Board of Education building, I, I think that you definitely have to weigh the pros and cons of buildings, businesses, and those, and that opportunity. It's not to say that anything is set in stone, and it's certainly not to say that any decisions have been made, and it's certainly not up to me. The Board of Education will decide where they want to build a building, what it's going to look like, who's going to be in the building, and so forth. As you know, I've presented some ideas just to get the people, just, just to get people thinking, and quite frankly, to be in the process, which is leading up to our presentation next, next Tuesday. And I think I've got people thinking, but at the same time, we all have to be working together on this. I use an analogy in business about the, the stagecoach in the Wild West with the team of horses. If the horses aren't pulling all in the same direction, you're tearing the stagecoach apart. And that's kind of what we're doing right now. We need to get in, going in the same direction, and we need to hopefully create the best proposal for the Board of Education, so they have no choice but to choose to build an office building in downtown. And that's my two cents, my personal opinion, and I appreciate the opportunity to say that this evening. Be happy to answer any questions, but I know you guys are very, very steeped in this conversation and in this process, so I appreciate everything you've done. Thank you.
Well, thanks, Peter. Let me just respond by saying I beg to differ about the stagecoach and us pulling in different directions. This evening, all of us have signed a letter reiterating what it is the city has offered and has been offering to attract the Board of Education to locate downtown. I was at that meeting today where they had the presentation of the analysis of the park off the highway, and I do believe that it would be in everyone's best interest if they exercised their option to extend, or to extend the option, because truly, I do not believe they have considered downtown fully. Could there be better communication? And I would like to hear from the Board of Education what they are interested in in downtown, what sites are of interest to them. I'd like to know what information they would like. The bottom line is, is like you said, it's their decision. We will make that communication clear to them, and, and we welcome a continuing dialogue, an iterative process, as Councilman Brubaker likes to call it. I don't think that what they want is for us to tell them where we think they should go, and so we're very open to that dialogue, and I, I hope that they... And so we're very open to that dialogue, and I hope that they will listen. Anyone else like to respond? All right, well, the next comment, we have a few folks here, a couple of folks here from the employer support of the Guard and Reserve. And if you don't mind, please come and introduce yourselves because I've forgotten your names already, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and council members, and Mr. Zimmerman. My name is Ron Pitts, and this is my colleague, A.J. Nicolosi, and we're representing this evening the ESGR, the Employer Support of the Guard and Reserve. It's a volunteer organization under the Department of Defense. And this evening, there'll be a public signing, we thank you for that, Mayor, of this statement of support. What I'd like to do is just take about one minute to explain to you what the ESGR is, and then A.J. will be taking another minute to explain about the certificate that you'll be signing tonight. The ESGR is a volunteer organization under the Department of Defense. It came into existence in 1972 when we went to an all-volunteer army. The Department of Defense realized at that time that there would be some real issues if the National Guard and Reserve were counted on to help back the U.S. Army. In fact, in 1972 was the first time in our history where the active army could not go to war without the National Guard and Reserve, where every other man and woman in the line of defense. So whenever you watch a television program in the past on Iraq or in current day in Afghanistan, every other person that you see in a uniform is either a National Guardsman or a reservist. Ninety-nine point nine percent of the aircraft, military aircraft, that you see flying overhead is a National Guard or a reserve aircraft, and the figures just keep going on and on. But there is approximately 5,000 representatives like A.J. and myself. We go around the country giving briefings to National Guard and Reserve units explaining their employment, reemployment rights. And within the last two years, we've been tasked also to assist individuals in finding employment that wear the uniform. A.J.?
Thank you. So this evening, by signing this statement of support, the city is acknowledging, recognizing, honoring, and enforcing the Uniformed Services Employment and Reemployment Rights Act. Further, the city is going to ensure that the managers and supervisors throughout the city have the tools to manage the employees who serve within our Guard and Reserve organizations. We also hope that the city will appreciate the value, the leadership, the unique skills that the service member brings to the city's workforce. And on behalf of Mr. Ron Pitts, who is the Maryland Western, Maryland Chair, on behalf of George Goch, who is the Maryland Chair, Mr. Jim Rebholz, who is the ESGR National Chair, and the Honorable Leon Panetta, Secretary of Defense, we are pleased and proud to have your support and your signing of this statement of support.
Please come forward. And you read the last part of this certificate, but I was proud to be at the MML dinner last night with the other seven municipalities from Washington County, and proud to say that all of us have signed this. But I just want to read the top part of this because you outlined what we were pledging. But "We recognize the Guard and Reserve are essential to the strength of our nation and the well-being of our communities. In the highest American tradition, the patriotic men and women of the Guard and Reserve serve voluntarily in an honorable and vital profession. They train to respond to their community and their country in the time of need. They deserve the support of every segment of society. If these volunteer forces are to continue to serve our nation, increased public understanding is required of the essential role of the Guard and Reserve in preserving our national security." So as the employer of, I think we have at least three folks in the city staff who are active Guard and Reserve, it's my pleasure to present this certificate of support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if it's okay, Mayor, if we could get you sitting at your desk in the council members' round so we could get a photo?
Sure, absolutely. Come on up.
Because they're all part of the process, and this is the second of two. In 2008, this is a recommitment.
Here, let's put this back here. Oh, you want me to, oh, okay. Oh, you want me to do the...
Let's see if I might.
You were in the reserve? I didn't know that. I did not know that. What branch? Oh, good for you. Anyone else? All right. Got to have Facebook. All right.
One more, yes, just to make sure. I was in Public Affairs, too, so.
Famous last words, one more picture, right?
Thank you.
Thank you. Here you go.
New York City.
That's yours.
Oh, thank you. Okay, great, thanks. Well, thank you for that. Thank you for being here. And that concludes the citizen comments portion of the meeting. We're going to move into approval of minutes.
Mayor, hereby move for the approval of minutes. Presented for the mayor and council meetings held on January 29, February 5, February 12, and February 26, all 2013.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Ms. Nye. Any discussion? All those in favor of approval of the minutes, please say aye. Those opposed, say no. Minutes are approved. Now move into the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move that consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Nye and seconded by Mr. Brubaker. Any discussion? I just want to say I'm looking forward to the construction of a bike path and bike lanes, the continuation of the construction of our bike infrastructure here in Hagerstown. Any other comments? Discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda, please say aye. All those opposed, say no. Eyes have it. Okay, moving right along to unfinished business. The adoption of an ordinance to amend the land management code, definition of a minor subdivision.
Mayor, hereby move that the mayor and council adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 140 Land Management Code of the city code to revise the definition of a minor subdivision to seven or fewer residential lots.
Second.
I heard...
Two of us.
I heard Brubaker make the motion and Ms. Nye second.
No, Munson did too.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to adopt the ordinance, please say aye. All those opposed, say no. The eyes have it. Motion carries. Next up is the approval of an ordinance to amend the Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance, definition of a minor subdivision.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move that the mayor and council adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 47 Adequate Public Facilities of the city code to revise the definition of a minor subdivision to seven or fewer units.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker and seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. All those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next up is the approval of an ordinance for general obligation bonds for the 2012-2013 fiscal year.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move to approve an enabling ordinance as introduced authorizing the city of Hagerstown to issue and sell upon its full faith and credit general obligation bonds in one or more series in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $4,275,000. Proceeds from the sale of the bonds will be used for the public purposes described in detail in the ordinance together with related expenses and costs of issuance. Staff is hereby directed to proceed in working with the city's financial advisor and bond counsel to determine the best financing options for the city and with developing the necessary detailed resolutions and other documents to prepare for the sale of the bonds is directed by this ordinance. Final details regarding the amount, timing, method of sale, or sales, and other particulars will be spelled out in a detailed resolution to be presented to this body for approval at a future date prior to the issuance of the bonds as specified in this ordinance.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, say no. The approval of the ordinance is made. Next up is the approval of an annexation resolution.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move that the mayor and council adopt an annexation resolution for property located at 12305 Delwood Avenue. The property to be annexed is approximately 0.29 acres in size and is intended to be added to and made part of the adjacent municipal lands.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker and seconded by Mr. Metzner. All those in, or I'm sorry, any discussion?
The only thing that I would like to say is, again, when it comes to real estate and real estate agents, I don't believe that they point out what's needed to be pointed out as to whether or not you live in the city or in Washington County. And this has been a huge mistake in a lot of places with what the real estate people do do.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of adopting the annexation resolution, please say aye. Unopposed, say no. Eyes have it. Onto new business. First item up is the approval of a resolution intent to accept open space in collegiate acres.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move to approve a resolution indicating the city's intention to accept the two-acre open space as a public park, which is when it is satisfactorily completed by Brazier Homes Corporation. Further actions by the mayor and council will be required to transfer the land, excuse me, to the city, requested by Brazier Homes. This resolution only expresses our intention with conditions.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Munson, seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next up is the approval of a resolution for pool operation and management agreement with the YMCA.
Mayor, hereby move for approval of a resolution authorizing an agreement with the YMCA of Hagerstown, Maryland Incorporated for operation and management of Potterfield Pool for the 2013 pool season.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner, seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next up is the approval of the Allen A. Myers LP Construction Services Contract for the construction improvements at R.C. Wilson Phase IV Disinfectant Byproduct Rule II Project.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move that the mayor and city council approve the Allen A. Myers LP Construction Services Contract for the Phase IV Disinfectant Byproduct Rule II Project for construction improvements at the R.C. Wilson Water Treatment Plant in the amount of $11,110,000.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Alshire, seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor of the approval of this contract, please say aye. Any opposed, say no. The eyes have it. It's going to be a huge project. Looking forward to seeing how it comes along. Next up is the approval of Gannett Fleming Construction Management Engineering Services Contract for construction improvements at the R.C. Wilson Phase IV Disinfectant Byproduct Rule II Project.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move that the mayor and city council approve the Construction Management Engineering Services Agreement for the Phase IV Disinfectant Byproduct Rule II Project for construction improvements to the R.C. Wilson Water Treatment Plant in the amount of $588,400.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Brubaker. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed, say no. Eyes have it. Next up is the approval of the consent agreement between the city of Hagerstown and the Maryland Department of the Environment, Water Management Administration.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move that the mayor and city council approve the consent agreement between the city of Hagerstown and the Maryland Department of the Environment, Water Management Administration. The agreement will satisfy the staff request of the MDE Safe Drinking Water Act Implementation Division to allow for a 24-month extension for compliance with the Stage II Disinfectant Byproduct Rule.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker and seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next up is the approval of purchase of a water division vehicle, 207, through Co-Stars Program.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move that the mayor and city council approve the purchase of Water Division Vehicle 207 in the amount of $147,141 through Co-Stars, which is the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Cooperative Purchasing Program administered by the Department of General Services.
Motion made by Ms. Nye and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next up is the approval of Demand Response Sales and Services Agreement between the city of Hagerstown and Enernock, Inc.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move that the mayor and city council approve the Demand Response Sales and Services Agreement between the city of Hagerstown and Enernock, Inc. The term of the agreement is five years with expected capacity payment earnings for the water division totaling $216,000.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Munson and seconded by Mr. Brubaker. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, say no. And we have one abstention, Mr. Alshire. Next up is approval of purchase of Public Works Vehicles Number 23 and Number 24 through the Co-Stars Program.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move that the mayor and council approve the purchase of Public Works Vehicle Number 23 in the amount of $137,124 for fiscal year 13, and to approve the purchase of Vehicle Number 24 in the amount of $137,124 for fiscal year 14. Both vehicles will be purchased through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Cooperative Purchasing Program, known as Co-Stars, and is administered by the Department of General Services.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Alshire, seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed, say no. Any extensions? Next up is the approval of use of available contingency funds for 3640 North Potomac Street Artist Apartment Renovations. That's true. I don't have that one here in my packet. Go ahead and make the, we're going to skip what I just said and have a motion for the approval of FY 13 employee compensation.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move to approve a payment of $1,000 made to each full-time regular employee and $200 to each part-time regular employee with the following conditions. The employee was hired prior to 12/1/2012, and the payment amount is based on employee's status as of 12/1/2012, either full-time or part-time regular, and the employee is actively employed on 6/2/2013. The payment will be distributed to qualified employees on Friday, June 7, 2013. Funding for this payment will come from unreserved fund balance for general fund and special revenue fund employees, and from unrestricted net assets for enterprise fund employees.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Munson. Mr. Munson, is there any discussion?
Just two comments. The first comment is that while I don't generally support the approach where you would provide a specific amount of funding, I certainly support this request because I think staff has outlined, you know, the appropriate availability of funds. I think that the clear and better approach and the more stable approach for your employee base is a level of wage adjustment that is secured, that is then, you know, depended upon. I just simply think that's a better way to govern. That being said, I would say to all of the employees that the only promise that I have made in this process of elected office is responsible management of the citizens' funds.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I would like the, like to thank the city employees for their patience and certainly their dedication. Our employees haven't received many of the benefits that they deserve thanks to the drastic economic situation we've been through. And I am voting for this, supporting this because I believe it is at least a way that city government can say, "Thank you for the efforts you've made and, and thank you for your dedication to the city employees."
I would echo both the sentiments of Mr. Alshire and Mr. Munson in thanking our employees and the sacrifices they've made in the economic downturn in order to keep the city fiscally sound, but also to keep our high level of service to our citizens and our customers. And I do know that as negotiations continue on the, the new labor contracts that the city is, the city council, I think, is very interested in enhancing those wages that Mr. Alshire mentioned. And we hope that both teams will work collaboratively in order to achieve the goals that we have set forth. Any other discussion?
I would just like to say that I do agree with Kristen. When my husband did work, I know that this was a, a real, not a good thing with him, with basically bonuses. It was nothing that was going to help at the end of when people go into retirement. So, that's all I have to say. Everybody must be okay with it because I didn't hear any complaints from any employees.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the approval of the FY13 employee compensation, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Now we have the approval to use available contingency funds for 3640 North Potomac Street Artist Apartment Renovations.
Mayor, hereby move for mayor and council to approve the use of contingency funds for the Artist Apartment Renovation Project at 3640 North Potomac Street. The contingency funds are included in the project budget of $550,000 and will be used for structural upgrades, fire separation work, and roof replacement. The original lump sum construction contract with Milton Stampedり Builders for bid number 1528.12 will increase in value by $61,000. The project is funded by federal community development block grant funds and state community legacy funds.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker and seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next up is the Appalachian Regional Commission FY14 Project Funding Request.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move the mayor and council authorize the submission of two projects to the county commissioners for funding from the fiscal year 2014 Appalachian Regional Commission Grant. Two projects requesting ARC funding are ranked as follows. Number one, design and engineering of new parking deck in downtown Hagerstown requesting $350,000 in ARC funds. And secondly, City of Hagerstown broadband expansion strategic plan requesting $50,000 in ARC funds.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Thank you. The motion carries. Next up is the approval of a contract for the Frederick Street Culvert Project and sidewalk improvements.
How about Antietam Street?
I apologize, I'm all mixed up. This is the motion for ratification of an emergency procurement, emergency partial demolition of 21 West Antietam Street.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the ratification of an emergency procurement for the partial demolition of 21 West Antietam Street. The building sustained significant fire damage on February 7, 2013, and the top floor was deemed to be unstable and a threat to public safety by Daniel Madinek, I apologize if I got the name incorrect, professional engineer. Staff ordered the immediate partial demolition of the structure to eliminate the threat to public safety. West Antietam Street was ordered closed and remained closed for over two weeks. Allegheny Wrecking and Salvage of Hagerstown, Maryland completed the demolition work. The cost of the demolition work performed by Allegheny Wrecking and Salvage was $87,100. The total project cost is $90,417.35 inclusive of materials and supplies acquired by staff. The work performed at this property has been paid from the property abatement account. The property owners have been invoiced for the total costs and corresponding liens have been placed against the property.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Alshire and seconded by Mr. Brubaker. Any discussion? I want to thank staff for all the work that they put into taking care of this emergency situation. Know that they were out there on weekends and evenings and I would note that the cost, it's not inclusive of any time spent by staff, so I really do appreciate their work on this. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we have the approval of a contract for the Frederick Street Culvert and Sidewalk Improvements.
Mayor, hereby move for the approval of contract number 12-12-SD-13 with Huntsberry Brothers, Inc. in the amount of $340,860 to extend both ends of the existing box culvert to widen Frederick Street and construct sidewalks on both sides of the street. Funding for the project will be from excise tax and state aid amounting to $360,000.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion?
Yes.
Well, this will allow people to access the city in a pedestrian manner and through a bottleneck through a dangerous spot and, you know, I think it'll be great. There's shopping nearby and it's a good project to do in a difficult place.
I drive past this location every day. If there is one thing I, and Rodney, if you're here, got calls about often, it was this specific location and the ability for the walking public to get to some of the residential area just beyond it. And if you see it after a rain, you pretty much, you walk out in the road to get around it because there's no way that you walk through the area. There are two things that folks often complained about associated with this location as a commissioner. One complaint I often got was the lack of sidewalk accessibility from the shopping center, the food line shopping center there to the, the townhouses and development beyond it. And the second complaint was often the walking public that stopped to pick up the, the county commuter and basically stood out in the elements in the rain and, and inclement weather. So I would just like to thank city staff for accomplishing the goal of finding and locating $340,000 to make this corrective action before the county could locate the much smaller amount to place shelters in those locations for people to wait for the bus.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The ayes have it. And we have the approval of an amendment to the Safe Speeds for Students contract.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move the mayor and city council approve the attached contract amendment to modify the speed camera enforcement contract dated January 3, 2012 between the city and Breckford Corporation. The amendment is expected to cost an additional $15,000 per year and will be paid for by revenues received from this program. The amendment was reviewed and approved by the mayor and council at the March 19, 2013 work session.
Second.
We have a motion made by Mr. Metzner and a second by Mr. Alshire. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I hereby move for the mayor and council to approve the transfer of $50,000 from the Upper Floors Redevelopment Fund into the Hagerstown Revolving Loan Fund. This will allow the city to apply for and receive a two-to-one match from the state of Maryland, providing $100,000 in state funding into the city's revolving loan fund. This partnership with the state will allow for the processing of a loan application from Duvernage LLC. If Duvernage's loan application is approved, the state funding would be used for this purpose.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Munson, seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion?
Yes, I just think this is a real win-win situation and, again, as I said last week, the staff went back when there were some, some difficulties, reworked it, and it turned out to be our advantage. And I know the headline in the newspaper said the city loans $100,000, but really what it is, is by staking $50,000, the state is pumping another $100,000 into our revolving loan fund, all of which will come back to make loans to other businesses. Our $50,000, the state's $100,000, the state's money is going to stay here. It's not going to go away. So this is a great deal and it's bringing 25 additional, I think I had that number right, 25 additional employees to the city with the possibility of more. So this is a win-win in a lot of ways and, you know, I think it goes far beyond the simple loan of money to the private enterprise.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving the resolution, or I'm sorry, the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. And that does it for new business. And now we are into city administrators' comments.
I have two, two this evening. One, just a reminder that Friday, city offices will be closed in recognition of the Good Friday holiday. And then if I could, just to go back to the motion on the ARC application, Kathy and I realized that we've got an error in the motion. We said $50,000 as the amount of the requested funds for the broadband. That's actually the total cost. Our share would be 25. The ARC grant funding would be 25,000. So I suppose just to make sure the record's clear, what we'd actually be requesting from ARC would be 25,000.
I'd be happy to change the motion if that's.
The application forms right, it was the motion was wrong. So my apologies for that.
I made the motion, I'm more than happy to amend it to 25,000.
Yeah, that's.
I think we're safe, we're done because we can ask up to 50, so you ask for 25 and we're fine.
Any, anybody have an, any heartburn over that?
No, just, just make it clear that it's for the record that, we realize that.
Okay.
I think that's fine.
Duly noted. Thank you, Mr. City Administrator.
That's it for me.
Okay. Onto mayor and council comments. Who would like to begin tonight? Mr. Metzner?
I'd be happy to. I'll, very short, this Passover and this Good Friday and then Easter Sunday. I just wish everybody a very happy holiday and hopefully the weatherman's right and we're going to actually have a very nice Easter Sunday.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Munson?
My comments are going to be limited to, "Happy holiday to everybody."
Thank you. Ms. Nye?
Mine aren't going to be limited. Bruce, this one's for you since I didn't have time to get these things called in. There was a gentleman over at the Alexandra House that was interested in seeing if we could perhaps give two more parking spaces for those people who live in the Alexandra House, even though somebody else may occupy it during the day. At night, these people would then be able to access it. There are those that also live in Elizabeth Court, so if someone could just speak to those who actually do live in these two places, because we do have handicapped people that are unable to go a distance to get into their vehicle. I said I would look into it, so I'm now handing it off to you. All right? And I will give you the gentleman's name over at the Alexandra House. Also, we've got a major problem again with trash, but I understand that we no longer have a person in place as far as going around and getting all of the trash the way that it should be.
It's a part-time position, I'm saying.
Correct. Okay? And this here is what happens usually on the weekends. It is up in the West End. It is with Key Circle and Dakota Avenue as well as on Franklin, where's my notes? It's on Franklin and I forget where the other one is. Anyway, if someone can just get back to me, because these people are habitual offenders, but it does happen on the weekends and we don't have anybody covering on the weekend. All right? And I do have that as far as numbers of houses, the numbers are not there, that you, that they are visible. All right? Also, I want to thank Ms. Wilson for coming in tonight. I know that I live in front of the fairgrounds. I'm not close to Reed Park, but as she was saying, that little park does have a lot of usage. Not only does kids pick up as far as playing down there, which was the football, they also have soccer practice in that area. They also have a volleyball court, I believe it is, in that area since I am seeing a net. And as well as, this is an area that kids can go and play, but they don't have to pay to play because most everything else over there is organized, except for up at the Athletic Club. So I just, you know, this whole thing with the dog, dog park, and I had sat in on it, is that I still, for the life of me, cannot understand why there could not be communication between the railroad and the city with the city park, that it lies up there and it is not in an active park. When Mr. Miller came in here with the Humane Society, he said a dog park should not be included in an active park. And I really don't know how well this is going to work since we also have people who walks their dogs over there as a walking park for the dogs. But anyway, that's my two cents on that. And I just wanted to see if there has been any discussion on knowing that these electric bills are going to start flying in here now as to the utility relief money, it being used to try to offset some of these bills. I do understand that there is still money that is left from the utility relief. And I think that there was a discussion that was going on, but I don't know how far it has gotten.
I'm not sure, man. I'd send off you just a little summary in regards to the shut offs that'll begin next Monday.
Yeah, right.
I'll have to check with Scott in terms of the balance on the.
Yeah, because I mean, you know, those, you know, those coming in, at least that money, I know that there was a criteria before, but right now that money is sitting there.
Okay.
And if it can help to get the city back on track again with some of it, I think that it's, you know, money that's been put to good use.
Okay. I'll, I'll check on the balance.
And that's it.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize to my city council friends here, but I'd like to pick up on one thing that she said, and that's the trash in the West End. I've too have had complaints about that, especially Key Circle. And it's been, people who are putting the trash out have violated it over and over and over again. Now, it's my understanding that we did not, did not have a staff person to handle this but last Thursday or Friday. but last Thursday or Friday, at least interviews were taking place to put a new staff person on. I'm hopeful that that person can go to work quickly and start resolving some of these trash issues. And Councilwoman Nye is correct, the weekend is one of the times when they put the trash out days early. And it just blows around and messes up the neighborhood in that area. But it's not limited to that area, there are other areas across the city of Hagerstown that are really very dirty and need to be cleaned up. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure, and I think the dog park comments are in anticipation of the city council receiving the report of the Dog Park Task Force, which will be coming in for our work session next Tuesday, just for everyone's information. Mr. Brubaker?
Monday and this morning, Tuesday morning, I attended the Interstate 81 Corridor Coalition Conference, which was held in Hagerstown. It brought 100 professionals in business, government, and education from all six states along the Interstate 81 corridor to Hagerstown. By the way, they like our downtown and our downtown buildings, many of them. As almost every conference that comes here remarks. That digression aside, it was a good conference with a lot of good presentations. But one thing I want to clear up or elaborate on is, this coalition is not just about increasing capacity or lobbying for increasing capacity. There's, they are equal emphasis on safety. There's a total dedication to try to improve response times and safety impediments along the road, and also the environment. So, and also looking at multimodal solutions. In fact, we went up to the multimodal, the new development in Franklin County near Greencastle, the Truck Rail Transfer Point that's being developed up there to try to get ideas for maybe future rail corridors along 81 to help with the freight situation. So, at any rate, it's a good conference for Hagerstown. It's the second time it's been held here, and I think very successful. And I represented the city and also the Metropolitan Planning Organization that I'm chairman of.
And I would just like to say, I appreciate all your efforts in representing the city of Hagerstown and those various planning organizations that you participate in. I appreciate that, thank you very much. Mr. Alshire?
Couple of things. As the mayor noted, we attended the MML meeting last evening with the other towns. Two items that came up, one was the county excise tax. I'm not certain what transpired at that public hearing for the Board of County Commissioners today, but I did, at that meeting last evening, reiterate the concerns that the city has, as well as other municipalities, that if the excise tax is suspended by the county, that the municipalities need to reconsider the good faith effort that was made in adoption of an APFO consistent with the county. It's clearly written into that, that was clearly the intent, and that intent is being disrupted if that tax is being suspended. The second was the gas tax, and just, I think, what the public, I think, should be aware of is, you know, us as elected officials and the public in general gets these, you know, notifications from the state, you know, tired of sitting in traffic, you know, support this measure, and it'll address those issues. And, you know, when I review the information, it appears to me that what will generally occur is that all of those folks traveling on the roads and paying that additional tax generate that 800 million extra dollars, which will go to mass transit. And the 10 cent increase proposed for the mass transit riders, which generates about $10 million, will go toward extra help for fixing roads. As one member of the community that lives in an area where it is twice as costly for our average daily commute than it is for those in the metropolitan areas that will benefit from the lion's share of this money, there is just no logic in that approach, and it should not be sold to the public in that manner. The other item is I attended the HNDP meeting this past week, and I know we had a discussion weeks before of sort of, you know, what the county's looking for in terms of these EDC, you know, top five initiatives. And I would just note that, you know, the, in their discussion, they had a list of items that I found, you know, to be fairly actionable items. And so, you know, I commended them on sort of getting those items together, and I think it would be interesting for us to at least review them in the broader context of, you know, what we plan to submit, if we do, back to the county. The other item is I'd like at some point, again, I would reiterate a request, to talk about the outstanding debts that we have among various tenants and loan holders in various programs that the city has in place. The other item is, you know, we did sign an agreement with an entity, Sora, I believe about three weeks ago now. As part of that agreement, we were intended to get weekly written progress updates in the three weeks, I guess, since that agreement. I haven't seen anything in writing from that entity. And the other item is, it looks like we got a copy of the Phase 2 Environmental Site Assessment Report for the previously conceived music site. And, you know, if anyone hasn't had a chance to read it yet, it certainly has some good information in it, not only for us, but I think probably potentially for those property owners. And then the last item that I have on the evening is the Board of Education's discussion today, as Mr. Perini had alluded to, of their efforts to date in terms of selecting a site for a future Board of Education building. And just wanted to make a couple of comments on that, because, you know, like it or not, behind the scenes, we get contacted via text and email and phone calls from various parties, you know, that I think the public just doesn't have an opportunity to see all the time. And as I said before the election, my intent in sitting here is to make things as transparent as possible. So, you know, the scorecard that I have is clearly there isn't a majority among the current Board of Education membership that is interested, sincerely interested, in a downtown location. We can slice it any way we'd like, but that's the scorecard that I have, whether it be some that believe it's completely unsafe, or others that felt compelled, you know, that it'd be tied to a larger project like a baseball stadium. It just seems like the scorecard isn't in our favor, and that the Allegheny option is clearly their preferred location. That being said, as a member who sat through the process of the hospital, where some of the same folks fighting to put a stadium down here and a Board of Ed down here were fighting us from keeping the hospital down here, I don't want to be part of that charade, I just simply don't. If that's the decision of the Board of Education, as I said weeks ago, I'd rather they just make it so that we can move on and talk about other things that are viable. If it's expansion of Bisfa or construction of the next parking deck. Those are the things that I think this body needs to focus on regardless of the decisions made by other bodies and other power brokers and other community leaders. The, and I will throw out, you know, if we want to couple the notion of the cheapest alternative, as the superintendent of schools alluded to in his comments to the paper, and the city's intent to keep it in the city, and the desire to have land, to me, there's no reason for the Board of Ed even to move. The city is tearing down Melp, it has about 15 acres there. It could simply give that to the Board of Ed, the Board of Ed could stay, redevelop that site. And that frankly, to the taxpayer, is the cheapest alternative, because at the end of the day, it keeps the Allegheny power site on the tax rolls and the county getting $60,000 a year in property taxes, rather than removing that from the tax rolls. And the Board of Ed doesn't leave the city. But, that aside, I think that we need to continue to focus on things like neighborhood revitalization in the city, and all those little things that our citizens depend on us to do, and try to avoid getting tied up, you know, in these efforts that were being tugged in a million different directions.
Thanks. My only comment tonight is that I have welcomed students from Vaisal, Germany, here to Hagerstown. They arrived in town last Thursday. I think they're only here for a few weeks, but very enthusiastic and energetic young people. After our meeting here in the council chamber, we all went to the Discovery Station to check out the exhibits there, and they have a lot of exciting things planned for their stay here. And I look forward to taking a trip to Vaisal and getting to know the community there. And with that, if there aren't any other, any more comments, this meeting is adjourned.